Ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I will call this meeting due to order. Today's date is Tuesday, October 25, 2022. The time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Bearbo?
Present.
Freedleeb?
Here.
Paulson?
Present.
Biondich?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Berenzelley?
Here.
Cuffey?
Present. Whoever on please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and welcome to those who are in the audience and those who are listening at home. We'll move to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody from the general public to come up to the podium and speak and address the council on any issue they would like. Is there anybody in the audience that I could speak today? Seeing none, we'll move to item five, the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on October 11, 2022, and the special meeting that was held on October 18, 2022. And the last item on the consent agenda is 5.2, the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 22-020, the schedule of bills. These are the consent agenda items on for discussion today and looking for council action.
Also move the consent agenda, Mayor.
Council Bearbo moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support? Support by Council Barzeli? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item six, appearances. There is no one scheduled to appear before the council meeting this evening. Once again, this is an opportunity for the general public to speak on any issue they deem appropriate and whatever they'd like to address to the council. Is there, once again, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item seven, unfinished business. Item 7.1, the property at 410 Fifth Street South. And we have our city attorney here. Colleen, do we have any other information that we can disseminate to the public, Mr. and Mrs. Kingsley, and the elected body regarding the progress at this property?
I spoke with Brian Lindsey. We're still getting court all day.
Put your light on.
I'm sorry. Mayor Cuffey and Council, I spoke with Brian Lindsey to get an update before this meeting. As you're aware, there is a motion hearing scheduled for January 17 at 2023 at 8:30 AM on the motion to raise the building. I believe Mr. Lindsey had scheduled a conference call with Carl Sunquist pursuant as a follow-up to the letter he sent him, who was representing Todd Toman, to discuss if they would agree to an inspection of the property. I believe that he, I don't know that he heard from him today, but I know he's continuing to follow up on that. That's the next step. We'd like to get in the property, see what's been going on.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to make a question if it's amenable to the rest of the council. I know this is, I know the civil courts are packed pretty good, and I know that some of these property adjustments and particularly eminent domain issues can be a, an issue that is difficult to resolve. And I know that we have all our ducks in a row. We've been real patient in that regard, and I know that January 17, 2023 is the court date that's been set. But if you would, I would like if it's amenable to the council to take another look at that court date, see if it can be moved up. Is there any way that they can fit it in earlier than Ju-, January 17? Could you do that for us?
We can make a request of the court by letter. I know when these things get set, the court usually gives us the earliest date, but we could certainly do that. It would be to the discretion of the court to do that or not.
Yeah, if you could make that inquiry, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, or we would. Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wanting to follow up on the, if we had the inspection of the live electrical wire in the, I think it's four, is it 412? The garage portion of it, was that inspection conducted? And what was the outcome of that inspection?
Britt, do we have any information?
I want to speak intelligently, so I want to say at the moment that I don't have that information. I am positive the inspection was conducted, but let me get back to you tomorrow. That's okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do know that we talked to the utilities, and I, but I, let me verify that with the utilities, just to make sure.
Appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And it was my understanding that you were sending somebody out just looking for something from them. Thank you, Britt. Okay, are any other questions council have regarding 410 Fifth Street South?
Here.
Council Bearbo?
It doesn't have to do exactly with that, but maybe I can ask a request here to the council and to you, Britt, and administration. If any of the things like this are laying out there open to the public utilities from the city, let me know, because I go to all the meetings of their commission. You know, something gets forgotten and not handled, I can certainly bring it up at their meetings from the, on behalf of the council. So if you just let me know prior to the fourth Monday of the month, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Kingsley, anything at this point in time? Any questions, comments, requests? Please come forward, and thank you once again for your patience and to the city council meeting.
Thank you. I think I just have a couple of brief clarifications. So you had said that they were trying to do a phone conference with Mr. Sunquist?
Correct.
And that was regarding, now, at the last meeting, it was indicated that there was maybe some hope of them cooperating, and that's what that meeting was going to address?
That's right. It was, Mr. Lindsey had sent a letter and then asking to do an inspection and formally through the appropriate channels with Mr. Toman's attorney. Correct?
And at that time, they had talked like they may cooperate?
I don't know that they spoke. I know Mr. Lindsey sent the letter, and I know they had scheduled a time to talk, and I don't know that they did talk on the actual day. So as of today, he hadn't spoken with him, was working on getting in touch with him, continued, continuing to do so.
That meeting was going to happen that?
Yeah, I noticed that in the minutes on the 14th. I don't, I can't speak to that because I didn't ask Brian specifically about it, so I won't hazard a guess on it. But I know what he told me today is he was trying to get in touch with Mr. Sunquist and see if he would agree to an inspection.
If I may, so could we find out this information from your associate, Brian Lindsey? And then any information that he has that is, is updated that we have? Could you make sure we share that with our city minister, share it with the rest of the council? And then also any public information that can be disseminated regarding what you find out to Mr., to forward it to Mr. and Mrs. Kingsley as well?
I can ask him to do that, certainly, Mayor.
Thank you.
I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, one more follow-up question when we have the appraiser go in and do a drive-by. Did we get a report back on that at all?
They're still working on it.
They're still working, okay.
Appraiser contacted me today, and she had also contacted Mr. Toman, and he has not accepted, offered her an inspection either. We get in. So she contacted me today and said, I'm just going to do the exterior, and I said the city is fine with just an exterior at this moment.
Okay, so then when that's completed, we'll get a, we'll receive a copy of that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
One quick question, does, when the county comes in and does, is it an assessment that they do? It's not really an appraisal, is that correct?
You are the.
When the, if the county comes, when it's come time to assess your property for property taxes, it is an assessment, not an appraisal, correct?
That's what it's called. Is that, is that what's occurring? It's an assessment?
We're getting an appraisal.
An appraisal is different. That would be a licensed appraiser.
And that's what we're looking at.
Who's trained in being able to establish market value of properties, whereas assessments are similar, but assessors are there to determine what the value of the property is for tax purposes. So the numbers can vary depending on who's doing what.
Thank you. And I just wanted that clarification to show the difference between what assessment is and what an actual appraisal is, what we're trying to get to here.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to item 7.2 on the agenda, which is the clinic lease. Britt, do we have any updates on the lease moving forward with respect to what we need to do to remediate some of the issues?
No, I don't have an update today.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item 7.3, the rental code ordinance. I know that the planning and zoning met yesterday to have a working session regarding planning and zoning. I know that Counselor Biondich and Counselor Bearbo were present as well as they went through this working session. So if you would like, if you would be, or Counselor Bearbo, to kind of give us a little synopsis of what that working session entailed, and we're on the path moving forward. Counselor Biondich?
Thank you, yes. I think they are, they are on the path to working forward. There were some kinks in there that they had to rework. We did have one citizen attend the meeting as well, voicing frustrations with rental, and I think that's common among people who live next door to them. So it was, it was a good meeting. I think they are moving ahead, we're hoping to have it ready or have them present it to the council by the first, first part of the year. So, thank you.
And if I may ask one question from that discussion group, was any discussion, or is that forthcoming in the very near future about when you're incorporating the ordinance? Was any discussion about the crime-free, the crime-free housing aspect of that?
If I may, my, on that part, the crime-free stuff, they're taking a look at that because it's so old, what was in there from back in 14. They think all the laws and some of the things may have been changed in the crime-free thing. So they're going to be asking staff to start looking and researching that, because they don't believe some of those are, can be enacted anymore from what the old statutes and stuff were, they've been changed by the state. So they need some more research in that section, is what came out last night.
And thank you. And the reason I asked that is I did talk to a former Duluth police chief today at a coffee shop, and he'd indicated that Duluth still has the crime-free housing aspect of the rent accord. It is in effect, and they do have that process moving forward, and it is an enforceable policy that they have. So I know that you're looking at that, and I was just looking at how you're moving forward with it, so thank you.
Mayor, that's good information that probably should be shared with the planning and zoning commissions, so they could get a copy of Duluth, so maybe more up to date. Because Grand Rapids, it looks like has removed most of their crime-free stuff out of their ordinance like that, so.
All right, thank you. I look forward to you continue to do your work and due diligence in that regard. And thank you, Counselor Biondich and Counselor Bearbo, for serving and being part of that process. Anything else on the rental code under item 7.3? Seeing none, we'll move to item 8.1 under eight item, discussion items made point one. We need to set a special meeting, and Pam Labine, our city clerk, would, I think we did set it at the committee of the whole meeting, to set the special meeting for November 15, 2022 at 8:45 AM in order to canvass the votes in the general election. So looking for a formal motion to set that special meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Two more late items under item eight, discussion items. Item 8.2 is a request to adopt a resolution approving the hiring of Douglas Kramer as a patrol officer for the City of Virginia Police Department contingent upon successfully passing the required background check, physical, and post-board licensure. Move to approve by Counselor Freedleeb, is there support? Support by Counselor Barzeli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And finally, under item discussion, item 8.3, adopt a resolution approving the hiring of Max Olson as a patrol officer for the Virginia Police Department, also contingent upon successfully passing the required background check, physical, and post-board licensure.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Freedleeb, supported by Counselor Barzeli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We'll move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on October 18, 2022, will turn this portion of our city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
Thank you. At the October 18 Committee of the Whole Meeting, Matt Reed, our engineer from S E H, reviewed the updated downtown parking map. The council did take that map and asked for a larger one, which I do have in my office, and I'll get brought up here so that staff and council can review it. The discussion we previously had was regarding modifying the permit parking and the two-hour parking requirements that will be brought up at a future meeting. Matt Reed also presented to the committee of the whole the proposed 2025 through 2027 and potentially beyond street and infrastructure priority map. This would be a very large project. No cost estimates have been determined yet until a final project plan has been determined. Once the determination is made, then S E H will obtain cost estimates and set public hearings for public input. Further discussion was held regarding the proposed project and suggestions for improvements. We did also have discussion regarding the federal funds that were awarded for the 2021 street and infrastructure project. As the funds came after the project started, thus the city needs to determine which other streets or areas to utilize the funding, as federal regulations dictate the project cannot start until after a federal view is completed. At that meeting, a street and alley committee meeting was suggested, which we will give you an update later. Matt Reed also updated the council on the police garage report. Contractors were able to finally see the roof when they were able to get the ceiling out, and the contractor discovered that they needed to add additional steel for supports in the roof. Therefore, they brought forward a change order. It was moved and supported to approve the change order number four from Lindsey Enterprises for the police garage project for an additional cost of $3,790. I'll move to approve.
Moved by Counselor Paulson to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Just note that they've started insulating the roof today, and they're doing, so hopefully we'll get in there before it snows a lot.
Yeah, thank you. Main delay was in a dirt contractor that didn't show up for a while and used an alternative method which to move the project forward, so thank you. It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And finally, under item discussion, item 8.3, adopt a resolution approving the hiring of Max Olson as a patrol officer for the Virginia Police Department, also contingent upon successfully passing the required background check, physical, and post-board licensure.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Freedleeb, supported by Counselor Barzeli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We'll move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on October 18, 2022, will turn this portion of our city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
Thank you. At the October 18 Committee of the Whole Meeting, Matt Reed, our engineer from S E H, reviewed the updated downtown parking map. The council did take that map and asked for a larger one, which I do have in my office, and I'll get brought up here so that staff and council can review it. The discussion we previously had was regarding modifying the permit parking and the two-hour parking requirements that will be brought up at a future meeting. Matt Reed also presented to the committee of the whole the proposed 2025 through 2027 and potentially beyond street and infrastructure priority map. This would be a very large project. No cost estimates have been determined yet until a final project plan has been determined. Once the determination is made, then S E H will obtain cost estimates and set public hearings for public input. Further discussion was held regarding the proposed project and suggestions for improvements. We did also have discussion regarding the federal funds that were awarded for the 2021 street and infrastructure project. As the funds came after the project started, thus the city needs to determine which other streets or areas to utilize the funding, as federal regulations dictate the project cannot start until after a federal view is completed. At that meeting, a street and alley committee meeting was suggested, which we will give you an update later. Matt Reed also updated the council on the police garage report. Contractors were able to finally see the roof when they were able to get the ceiling out, and the contractor discovered that they needed to add additional steel for supports in the roof. Therefore, they brought forward a change order. It was moved and supported to approve the change order number four from Lindsey Enterprises for the police garage project for an additional cost of $3,790. I'll move to approve.
Moved by Counselor Paulson to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support, Mayor? Support by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Just note that they've started insulating the roof today, and they're doing, so hopefully we'll get in there before it snows a lot.
Yeah, thank you. Main delay was in a dirt contractor that didn't show up for a while and used an alternative method which to move the project forward, so thank you. It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
At the meeting, we discussed that the city staff had solicited responses for audit services for the fiscal years 2022, 2023, and 2024. Only one response was received for the service. Thus, it was moved and supported to approve the proposal from Walker Jerunhany to conduct the annual audit for the city of Virginia for a three-year period beginning 2022.
Moved to approve by Counselor Freedleeb, is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearbo, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Jim Rosfit, Public Works Director, reviewed the request to purchase a 10-horsepower flight pump for the city lift stations. Rosfit stated that due to the required replacement of an older pump, we have utilized the two spares that we had on hand. It is now his recommendation that we purchase a spare pump to have on hand in case of emergency. It was noted that this was not a budgeted item, but there is money in the budget for the sewer fund to cover this expenditure. It was moved and supported to approve the purchase of the 10-horsepower model flight pump in the amount of $15,471 from electric pump.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Okay, supported by Counselor Bearbo, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We had received a request from a resident at 322 Sixth Street South for a handicap parking space, which would be located in the middle of the block. As this does not comply with the ADA requirements, it was moved and supported to recommend staff to send a letter regarding the handicap parking request at 322 Sixth Street South and why we cannot fulfill it.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearbo, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to add the discussion regarding City Code Section 10.37, titled Public Nuisances, to the next committee of the whole meeting for further discussion of the ordinance and possible changes for clarification. So moved.
Moved by Counselor Biondich, is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson, further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if we could also, if they have time and availability, maybe our police chief or assistant deputy chief, I mean, and maybe some of our building code folks that we could maybe go over some of those items with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Invite some of the staff pertinent to that, so thank you. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the L A L S contract, as it was presented to L A L S covering the years of 2023 through 2025.
Moved to approve by Counselor Freedleeb, is there support? Support by Counselor Barzeli, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We had received more than one request for the city to make application and accept funds from the Iron Range Resources on behalf of other agencies and for us to act as a fiscal agent. Therefore, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the A O A headquarters facility upgrade I triple R B application. I'll move to approve.
Moved to approve by Counselor Paulson, is there support? Support by Counselor Barzeli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for us to act as a fiscal agent for the Northeast Technical Services Expansion Project.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Freedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution allowing us to act as a fiscal agent for the Waschke Facility Expansion Project.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearbo, further discussion? And for the clarification of all of us and those who are listening at home and will be watching this later on, what is that expansion project that Waschke is looking to endeavor?
They're adding an EV charging station, electric vehicle charging station.
Oh, okay, adding EV charging, okay, thank you. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, it was moved and supported to approve the purchase of property at 106 Eight and a Half Street South, which is in the Public Safety Project area.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson, further discussion? Just one item, we close to closing on all the properties pretty soon?
Yes. Single digits.
And for those who have been patiently waiting for us to fill the big shoes that John Sullivan left when he moved from planning, we're working on hiring a new planner, is that correct?
Correct.
Very good, thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
No further items from that meeting.
Thank you very much, Britt. We'll move to item 9.2 on the agenda, which is the minutes from this morning's street and alley committee meeting, which was held on October 25, 2022 today. I think it was at 8:30 AM, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
And we have members of the committee here, Counselor Bearbo, the chairman of street and alley, Counselor Johnson, a member of a street and alley, and also Counselor Barzeli. So are you going to give the report?
I can, I can, Mayor, and if any of the other members of the committee want to add to it, they certainly can. All three members were present, along with Britt, Matt Reed, and his assistant, I can't remember, Ellie, her name, and Pam was here taking minutes, so we have nice minutes. You all have a copy on your desk. We had a long discussion about the $3 million that we are supposedly going to receive from the federal government for upgrades of streets and stuff geared more toward low to moderate income areas of the city, which we're just about 100% low to moderate income in Virginia, Minnesota. There are no strings attached to this dollars. We don't have to have matching dollars for this money. We had a long discussion about whether we wanted to do actual streets, since we have another big project coming up for streets. And the suggestion was made to start taking a look. We've got alleyways that are deteriorating, we have infrastructure under the alleys right now from the old steam vaults, everything where they're removed that are collapsing. We've got concrete standing up six inches in some areas, we've got cars rubbing their bottoms in some of the alleys because they're hitting things. So Matt Reed and his crew are going to put together a list, along with Jim Rosfit, of the alleys that will take in cost estimates, and we'll have that back by the committee in cost estimates, and we'll have that back by the committee of the whole, I believe, in November, the first one, in November of what, then we'll have to act at that next council meeting in November, which would be the 9th of November. Britt needs to get that information back to the federal government so we receive that money. So it is our recommendation that we look at that. We also have a CBGG grant out there for funds for some repairs of sewer lines and stuff on Second Avenue, but that hasn't come up yet, those meetings have not happened at this point. So that'll be a further discussion down the road. So we're going to make a recommendation in implementing a project for alley improvements in the City of Virginia and to include the removal of the infrastructure below the surfaces and to utilize the $3 million of federal funding for these improvements with discussion with the utilities, because the utilities will have to share in the cost, and we're looking at this to start in 2024. So it won't start, it's impossible for next year, but for 2024. So that is the motion that we're recommending to the council to get this started, and then we'll have all the studies and all the public hearings and all the other stuff once we get the alleys figured out, which ones and where the residents live. That'll come later.
Okay. And thank you for all your work. So it's moved by Councilor, represented, moved by Councilor Barbour, supported by Councilor Johnson, to recommend implementing a project for alley improvements in the City of Virginia and to include the removal of the infrastructure below the surface and to utilize the $3 million of federal funding for those improvements. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. So is this something that we'd be, the city would be going out for bids on, or is this something that we can actually do internally with our Public Works?
No, we cannot do this internally, it has to be done with outside bids, just like we do, because this is going to be, these alleys are going to be so closed in and so close, we have to have professional bidding on this to get this done. So we're going to be digging out, taking all the concrete out of these alleys that are there and going and taking out these steam vaults underneath, and there needs to be repairs on the sewers, everything's under those alleys.
You'll be actually digging?
Taking them out.
Okay. And then the next question I had when I was reading, it says the assessment could be waived on the alley if needed. Did you guys have a further discussion about what the assessments would look like?
Yeah, we certainly did. A normal assessment on an alley project is 75%, but we're not with this money from the feds. We feel it's unfair, because all these other street projects, we're going to be charging at least 20% at the max or lower, depending on grants, that we have at least a 20% assessment for the alley work that we're going to be doing, because otherwise, it's not fair to the rest of the community, because we're going to be, as we put streets in, everybody's going to get assessed with this money, stuff that we do. So there's nothing in this federal grant says we can't assess, but we don't have to, but we feel it is only fair for the community that we take care of. That'll be a whole separate subject coming up after we have the hearings and have the information and the costs. We'll have all this cost and stuff down the road.
Thank you, and thank you both for working on that, I appreciate it.
Hey, thank you. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 10 on the agenda, commission liaison reports. Does any city council have a report they, do you have a commission liaison report? Councilor Barbour?
I have a very quick one. The Public Utilities Commission met yesterday, it was a very short meeting. I just have a couple of updates for you. They had no injury reports is one of the things, so that's very, very good. The Public Safety Building Substation is completed now, and they've run some new lines, so they're going to be using this substation for also stuff to the mall and stuff, where they've had all kinds of problems interrupting, and this substation can handle excess load from this substation to the mall area in the southern part of Virginia, where we've had a lot of areas that have conked out over the storms and stuff, so they've decided to, they've moved the lines now and stuff, you saw that happening along the highway there here a couple of weeks back. So that is an update for the substation, but the work is completed on the substation for the Public Safety Building. They had an approval for a travel request for alignment to attend a transformer school for training. That's been approved for December 13th to the 16th in Marshall, Minnesota. They are now running the coal boiler at 40,000 pounds an hour to satisfy their coal contract. They have to utilize and use up some coal right now, so they're using the coal boiler right now, because if they don't, there's a penalty if they don't use all the coal and the stuff that they have stocked up for boiler. And once that's done, they'll be going to the pony boilers. One is in operation right now, and those, they can turn up anytime they want to, but right now they're running off of the big coal boiler. The second pony boiler, or the small boiler, will be in place, they feel, by the first of the year, so they'll have both of them, so they will have no shortages for heat and stuff in the core area of Virginia where steam is left. They had an update on all the steam that you've been seeing coming out of the manholes and stuff along the college and along Ninth Avenue. Had to do with a pump that was inside of the manhole that got fried, and of course the water was getting on the steam line, and they have a new pump installed now, so you'll see that that is done and gone. They had a successful rerouting of the, what is it, Third Avenue by the old Natural Harvest Food, where they rerouted the lines in there and made a circuit in there, that's completed that work now, and that is basically all they had at their meeting yesterday. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Councilor Barbour, for that report. We'll move to another council or commission liaison report, Councilor Biondich.
Thank you. We had our library meeting, which I always enjoy going to, to see everybody and catch up. The carpet is now complete, that project is done, and in the minutes, the new patrons are increasing for library cards, which is great to see that our library is being used so well. And they are officially fine-free for late items coming back. They do want the items back, but there is no fine any longer. So is there anything you'd like to add, Jody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Biondich, for that report, and we'll move to any other, are there any other commission liaison reports? Move to item 11, department head reports. I'll go from left to right. Britt, anything more that has come to bear that you'd like to just share with the public and elected body? Thank you. Colleen, anything from our legal department?
Nothing, nothing formal to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Pam, any announcements or questions or concerns or any updates regarding our early voting and our absentee ballots and how those are going?
And very busy, so that's still in progress until November 7th. Office and vote during the day, and extra hours, and the ads have been in the paper November 5th from 10 to 3.
Very good, thank you. Our finance HR director, Sheri Erickson. Sheri, anything to share with us this evening?
Nothing pertinent, just doing hiring and working on the budget and getting geared up for next year.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, so, okay. Any other department reports to give today? Jody Grabanowski, our library director, welcome once again to the council meeting. We always look forward to your updates, you always have some exciting news, and everything's a buzz at the library, it seems.
It is, we've been busy. Just a couple of things that are coming up on the calendar. Yes, we are fine-free, and as we say, we are fine-free, not responsibility-free, so if you bring it back, we aren't going to charge you fines, but if you don't bring it back, we will find you, or the collection agency will find you. So, there you go. But, events coming up. So tomorrow, Wednesday morning, we have a storytime, and it is a dress-up storytime, so if you have any little ones that want to come to the library dressed up at 10:30, Ms. Stephanie is ready for you. This week is the Minnesota Library Association Conference, and there are a few commission members that are going. I'm also going, I'm involved in the planning of it, so that's where I will be for the next few days. But we have some other events coming up quickly. So Aging with Gusto starts November 4th, so believe it or not, that's only a couple weeks away. If you are interested in this program, please call the library at 218-748-7525 to reserve your spot. It's free, they want to limit it to 20 people, and this is in partnership with Arrowhead Aging Agency, Arrowhead Aging, Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging. Oh my goodness, that is just hard to say. It's been a long day, it's only Tuesday. And then we have another event actually coming up on November, we have two. On November 8th, we have a law series, and we have a family law person coming in, and just if you have questions about forms you need to fill out, or what kind of forms you need, that kind of thing, she will be there for an hour, starting at noon. And then on November 10th, we have an author visit, so Sam Zimmerman will be joining us at noon. All of this is on our website, we have handouts at the library, we have posters, you can look at our Facebook page, Instagram, and also be on our electronic sign. So that is all I have for today.
Well, thank you, Jody. That was a lot of information packed into just a couple of minutes, so a lot of exciting things going on at the library, so thank you for that. Okay. Any other department head reports? Moving on to council reports, item 12, does any council have a report they'd like to give this evening? Question, Councilor Freely?
Thank you, Mayor. And this may go to Pam. I did run into a resident today who asked me a question about the ballot, and if that person went in to vote and, just hypothetically speaking, did not like either of the choices for mayor, that's just an example, and chose, didn't want to circle any of those, but move on to then select the others, would that invalidate that ballot then for not having made a selection in that area of the ballot?
No, it would not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Freely, thank you, Pam. Councilor Biondich?
Thank you, that prompted another question on voting. There is the public aware of where they can park, and is there going to be anything in the paper regarding ease of getting to the polling places, to the IT Mac for voting?
I haven't posted anything in the paper regarding the handicap, but we could put an ad in regarding that parking.
I think in the last election, there were a few people that were just, either couldn't get in to vote and didn't understand how it worked, so if we can each meeting just clarify, so our residents know how to get there, what modes of transportation are available, where they can park, who's there to help them if they have any difficulties. Thank you.
And thank you, and just to follow up on that, the A O A has been advertising that they will provide free transportation, and they, they'll be having, I see a number to call for that, so that's good. So thank you, Councilor Biondich. So any other questions, information before we adjourn for this evening? Everybody's wrapping up the computers, it looks like there's no questions moving forward, so we will adjourn this council meeting to our next meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. in the council chambers to accommodate the Tuesday voting. So, good luck, everybody, have a great week, we'll see you on November the 9th. We stand adjourned.